Good evening. I'm Tamara King, Richland Library's Community Relations Director, and I have the pleasure of welcoming you to this Community Town Hall. Thank you for joining us. On January 5th, 2021, Richland County welcomed five newly-elected council members, including Derek Pugh, District 2, Gretchen Barron, District 7, Overture Walker, District 8, Jessica Mackey, District 9, and Cheryl English, District 10. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there hasn't been many opportunities for citizens to meet or engage with their new representatives. So we are thrilled to have all five local leaders with us this evening. This is an incredible opportunity to get to know each of the council members better and see who's representing you. Over the next hour, we plan to address the visions they have for our community during these challenging times, and we will delve into issues that are important to constituents in their districts. If you would like to ask a question at any time during this meeting, press zero on your telephone keypad. You will be connected to a staff member who will note your name and question and then place you in a queue to ask that question live. So, let's get things underway. We will begin with Derek Pugh. He represents District 2, which includes parts of Columbia, Broad River Road, and Blythewood. Before serving in this role, he was the Vice Chairman for the Board of Zoning and Appeals and Planning Commission, and a planning commissioner for the town of Blythewood. He also was a board member for the Blythewood Chamber of Commerce. Councilman Pugh, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me, Ms. King.
Thank you. We're so excited to have you. You're kicking us off. We really want to hear from you. And kind of, where do you see Richland County in the next few years? And how do you plan to achieve those goals? When you look at all the growth, I mean, Blythewood is just really a growing area. Even the Broad River Corridor is a growing area. So there's a lot to be done, a lot underway. Where do you see the county and where would you like it to go in the next five years?
Well, thank you. That's absolutely a great question, Ms. King. You know, as we continue to do our diagnostics and figure out exactly where we are currently in the county on all levels of operation, it's important for us to fine-tune the things that are working well for us and to create better processes for those things that aren't working well for us. We also need to make sure that we educate our citizens on how county government operates, the functionality of a lot of positions within the county. And I say that to say, you know, a lot of citizens or constituents per se, they really don't understand how the county government works or who they need to contact if they are having an issue. And so I think just educating citizens on where to go, where to find this information, and how different parts of the government move and operates will cut down on a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, the not-understanding portion of, of, of the, the, the community. For a lot of people, I think a lot of people understand that if they had some balance and understanding about which direction to go, you know, uh, things would be a whole lot better. My goal is to set the example and, and show up to community events, create community events, make sure that I make myself accessible to those people that elected me to be their leader, and also to, um, to make sure that we, we practice transparency and, and, and have an open dialogue. I think a lot of times, um, in the past, uh, citizens felt that they were not informed about different things that were going on in the community or just per se, different projects, i.e. the penny tax. I, I, I really think if we would have been more open and honest about what was going on during those times and just giving the, the, giving the citizens a bird's eye view of exactly where their, their funds were going and being used for, I, I think it would have made for a better turnaround going forward with the penny tax. I mean, you know, Ms. King, it's not a secret that we have a black eye at Richland County, and it's important for us to directly work on repairing those communications. So when you ask the question, "Where do we see ourselves in the next few years?" I see ourselves as having an informed, well-rounded citizen who understands how Richland County government works. I, I also see the processes that are not working well being revamped and being reintroduced to the community and making it more user-friendly. And I also see us having more events to encompass the whole community and making sure that everybody's involved. I can speak for myself and my new colleagues that we have been doing a very good job of making sure that we're out in the public and making sure that we're making ourselves accessible to those people that put us in place. So I think if we continue to do those things, I think we'll, we'll, we'll have a brighter future going forward and we'll have a more informed citizen who understands exactly where we are and how we operate.
You know, you're mentioning about transparency and where people need to go for information and having events. And all, all of that is kind of centered around the pandemic that is still very much present in our community. How are you trying to make sure that we manage as a county and we're able to rebound, especially people who are business owners or job seekers, people who've been impacted by the community? I know you're personally an entrepreneur as well. So how do you see that playing a role to making sure people are made whole again after this pandemic?
Well, I, I think it's important for us to come to the table and figure out how we can develop some type of incentives to attract, um, uh, new businesses that are going to invest in the community and want to have longevity in the community. I, I think it's also important for us to continue to support those businesses that have reinvested in the community. And when I say reinvest, uh, I, I take, uh, I think it's in District 7, Councilwoman, um, Barron's district. The Lowes just launched a new, uh, grant, reopening, grand reopening. And that speaks volumes, seeing that we just came out of a global, we just came out of a global pandemic, and, uh, most businesses are closing, especially small businesses. But to have those big-box companies see the importance of making sure that they reestablish themselves in our community is very important because not only does that provide us with the tools and things that we need for our homes, but it also gives jobs to those people that, um, to those people who need jobs. And I think we can continue to encourage people to, uh, seek and take those jobs that are available. Because I, I, I'm very aware that our restaurant industry has taken a real hit when it comes to COVID-19. And a lot of people are making a really good living being waitresses and waiters and, and chefs and, and sous chefs and that whole restaurant industry. And so, you know, uh, we need to encourage those people that are currently looking for jobs, that have those type of backgrounds, to take the jobs that are available in hopes that the jobs that they are familiar with or comfortable with come back to the surface as we figure out how we can help undergird what this, what that industry's going through. So just supporting, um, local businesses and making sure that we encourage those who need jobs to take the jobs that are available in hopes that they can find something that they would like.
You know, those are very good points. Essential workers have been the backbone of this pandemic and making sure that our world continues to run as normally as possible during this time. So I commend you. Do you know if the county has any additional programs? I know there's some housing programs the county has right now. Is there anything else right now that the county is working on to help either with vaccine distribution or COVID testing? What are some of the things that you guys are working on? If you would like to share, if you could?
So some of the individual, some of our, um, some of the colleagues, myself and a few other of my colleagues, we've been working individually to build relationships in the community, such as, for an example, building relationships with Prisma Health and, and DHEC. We, I know I've been hosting mask giveaways and, um, and, uh, COVID-19 testing at St. Andrews and in the Blythewood area. I have, have had the opportunity to partner with, um, with, uh, Councilwoman, um, um, Barron and, uh, Councilwoman Mackey on these events because our districts butt up together. So, um, we're, we're definitely trying to set the example moving forward. I think, I'm, let me speak for myself. I'm fully vaccinated, and I made sure that I made it public that I was fully vaccinated because I know it's some people that, that look to see what the leaders are doing. And so if we don't set the example in a positive way, then, you know, we might deter someone else from getting the vaccination needed in order to save their lives. So I think just setting the example, continuing to partner with people in the community that can help move us forward during this time, and, uh, making sure that we keep, again, it goes back to education and commu- and communication, making sure we educate our citizens and making sure we communicate with them on all levels.
Well, you know, we're going to wrap up here. Thank you so much for, for all of that great information you gave us. A quick question for you, maybe it's not quick. They might be a little bit more involved. But if people weren't able to meet you, if, you know, if they weren't able to meet you during this time, I know you've been able to meet quite a few people, but not as many as you were if we weren't in where we are right now. What would you like citizens to know about you? Those who are meeting you right now for the first time on our town hall?
Well, I, I would, I would like for people to know that I am what you see. I'm going to be in the community. I'm going to be working. I'm not just going to create events and have other folks working. I'm going to be there, boots on the ground, whether it's picking up trash, whether it's reading books to the kids in the community, whether it's, um, volunteering at Harvest Hope, whatever it takes for me to set the example going forward. Because it's a, it's a, it's a new day in Richland County when it comes to representation. And, you know, because we are in a, we are in a state of recovery, it's important that we gain the trust of the community back by showing up and being around and making sure that we do everything that we're supposed to do. To, um, when, when we were out campaigning, we need to make sure that we follow through with everything that we said we were going to try to do. And one of the biggest things for me in District 2 is making sure that I, I do a great job of communicating. And on August, not August, but, um, on April the 1st, uh, I will be, um, I will be, I will have my first inaugural newsletter that will come out on a quarterly basis. And then we're also going to be doing a podcast called "The Councilman's Corner", which is going to give me an opportunity to communicate directly with the constituents in District 2 by allowing them to submit questions and me answering those questions for them and packaging that and then delivering it on a monthly basis.
That sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. If someone would like to contact you directly, how can they do that? Is there a number they can call or email or give them some more information about the Councilman's Corner? How do people get in touch with you?
Absolutely. They can, uh, send me an email at pugh, that's P-U-G-H dot Derek, that's D-E-R-R-E-K, at richlandcountysc.gov. I'm going to give that again. It's pugh, P-U-G-H dot Derek, D-E-R-R-E-K, at richlandcountysc.gov. And my cell number is 803-977-4339. Again, that's 803-977-4339.
Thank you for that. Again, for those of you just joining us, my name is Tamara King. I'm Richland Library's Community Relations Director, and you're listening to our Community TeleTown Hall, where we're having an important discussion with five newly-elected Richland County council members about their visions for the community amid the COVID-19 pandemic. If you would like to ask a question, please press zero on your telephone keypad, and you will be connected. If you don't mind, Councilman Pugh, can we go to the phone lines and, and get one phone call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, this person wants to know, um, let me go to her right quick. Precious Thompson, she wants to know about rental assistance during the pandemic.
Yes. So we do have a-
Precious, are you there?
Yes.
Precious, are you there? Hi, please go ahead. Ask your question.
Uh, yes. I was wondering about how do you regroup from the rental, from, from past month's rent and, um, trying to get back? How do you get, how, how do you get assistance, um, for rental, um, to, to get back on track to move forward when there's, there are certain guidelines stating that you can only get certain, uh, assistance? They will only help people with, um, how, how can I say? If you have been affected or if you haven't been affected by the pandemic, which the whole entire nation has been, so how do they justify who gets what, gets assistance, and who don't get assistance?
Good. That's a good question, Ms. Precious. The county, the county has just released a, um, they have just released a, um, rentals assistance program. And, um, that question would probably be best answered by one of my colleagues. Ms., uh, Barron is probably more versed in that because I think she's had some time to, um, look over that, her policy. Can you help me with that, um, Councilwoman Barron?
Uh, yes, sir. Good evening, Ms. Thompson, Thomas. But just wanted to let you know that the rental assistance program will be released via our website, at the Richland County website, on April the 5th is where we're slated to, um, start the application process. We're encouraging individuals to go ahead and go to that website now because there's some documents that you'll need in order to apply. And the rental assistance program will be given first come, first served. However, there are some priorities that are in place that could easily bump you up a little bit higher. For instance, um, if you've been unemployed, if there's a certain percentage of your home, um, of your, people who live in your home with you have also been impacted by, um, COVID through, um, lack of unemployment. So I would encourage you to go ahead and gather your things by going to our website at richlandcountysc.gov because it is one of those things where we have saw, we've seen across the country when these programs are released and these funds are released, within 24 hours, sometimes 48 hours, the, the funds are already gone. And it is, and the, and the great thing about it is if you're able to make application and get in there, you can backdate your rent all the way to March 2020 in up to 12 months, along with a separate application that will be available for you, for your utilities as well.
Okay. All right. So now that's richlandcountysc.gov?
Yes, ma'am. And that's Richland County, and county is spelled out, S-C dot G-O-V. And it's on the front page there. It's on the front page. So when you go to that homepage, you will see it. It's there, towards the bottom, I think it says rental assistance program. And then you'll be able to click there and see all the items that you, you need as you're preparing for, um, your application on April the 5th.
Okay. I appreciate you. And by the way, I don't know who Precious is, but my name is Tanya Jackson. I told that woman-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know who Precious is, but I told that woman and I took-
Your Precious, uh, your Precious, uh, thank you.
Well, I thank you. I appreciate you. But I, I just wanted to clear that up. I don't know who Precious, my mama named me Tanya.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson, for following.
You are so welcome.
Have a good one. Ms. Barron, since I already have you on the phone, I want to go ahead and introduce you. Gretchen Barron represents District 7, which includes Blythewood, Killian, and various sections of North Columbia. She has been engaged in educational program implementation and management for nearly 20 years and has served on the Board of Directors for the Greater Columbia Community Relations Council. She owns and operates Purpose Vision Consulting LLC and established Barron Academy in 2005. Ms. Barron, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you, Ms. King, for having me.
And, and the number one question I'm getting right now, so I'll go ahead and ask the citizens question, if that's okay. But the number one question I'm getting is when, when, what is the timeline for Richland County and state agencies being back open and to get back to business as, after the result of this pandemic?
So that is the million-dollar question that we have a million-dollar answer for. And, and that is currently, uh, I want to be real clear to the citizens. Richland County never closed. We never closed. However, we did, uh, we, we've been open, providing limited services. But as of right now, you can go to that same website that I mentioned earlier, richlandcountysc.gov, and when you click on the top, you can make an appointment. We are, we're not open 100% to the general public, but what we are doing is allowing, um, the, the residents and citizens of Richland County to be able to make an appointment. And when you're able to, you're making an appointment, um, with several of our departments, and they include the Assessor's Office, the Auditor's Office, Business Services, and that's that hot one there with the Business License and Taxes, Developmental, Development Services, um, to include residential and zoning permits and zoning. The Finance Department is open, and, um, the Neighborhood Improvement, um, program is open. And I think there's a couple more. Oh, the, uh, the Deeds Office and the Treasurer's Office. So you can pay those taxes in person now. So, welcome back, Richland County. So make your appointment. You can make your appointment either via our website or by calling the, um, by calling the actual department that you'd like to see. And you can call them, and they can also schedule their appointment.
Thank you for that. And you're an educator. You, um, established Barron Academy, so you're well-aware of some of the challenges the educators and parents and students are having right now. What is the county doing to address those concerns as it relates to teachers, getting kids back in school? How is the county taking, taking the lead on this?
Well, I, I'll say, I'll say it this way. You know, of course, Richland County, um, as a whole, we support our village agencies, which is Richland 1 and Richland 2 School District. And we, we may, although we may not be directly involved with some of the, the day-to-day reopening plans, I would say that we have definitely given the support, given the support of the local school districts to ensure that they need, that they have what they need so when teachers are, and teachers and the students return full-time, that it's a safe place and that there has been a, a, the reopening plan is safe to the point that, uh, you know, the, the staff feel safe. I know personally, um, I have, um, I have made audience with several, um, other elected officials as well as, um, the hospital, uh, agencies here in the Midlands to have a conversation about getting the teachers vaccinated earlier. And, and, you know, I know a lot of my other colleagues have, have joined the conversation, and we, we felt very strongly that, you know, teachers, if we're, if they are, they're indeed frontline, uh, workers. And by them being frontline workers, then what that says is that they need to be vaccinated because even, even, even for no other reason but to say thank you. Because on, on March the 16th, 2020, a decision was made that we would, the entire state would go virtual and do e-learning, something that we knew nothing of. However, the teachers turned this, they, as, as the word of COVID-19 or, or this pandemic has been pivot. Teachers pivot, and they provided plans and, and they provided e-learning opportunities for our students. And I think that it is critically important as we look forward to, um, the, the relief that we will get here in Richland County. As sitting as the Coronavirus Ad-Hoc Committee Chairperson, one of the conversations that I'm having with the administrator as well as staff is that let's look at creative ways that we can fund things that need to be taken care of as a result of COVID-19. And, and I want, want to speak specifically to supplemental learning opportunities for our children. As a mother, I know that, you know, my, my children have, they have really worked very hard to, to stay above the fray and to stay on task and to make sure that their grades don't slip. But there is still that, there's, there's still a, a thought that, hey, children are going to need some additional supplemental learning opportunities as we move forward, uh, in the, in the months to come, specifically to the summers. So I would love to see, uh, additional, um, funding that will go directly to our schools or even to our local community organizations who do such a fine job in educating our children, um, in the out-of-school hours.
That's great. Um, I have some questions from community members, if that's okay. I'd like to go to the phone line. I've got a few questions coming in, and I, I definitely want you to tell people a little bit about yourself too. But I've got a lot of calls, and I want to make sure that I get to people in this hour. Is that okay with you?
Oh, that's fine. Absolutely.
Okay. Now, this call is from Jackie, um, and she wants to know about things that are happening around Columbia Place Mall and moving county offices. I'm going to let Jackie into the call. Jackie, are you there?
I am here.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi, Jackie.
Um, please ask your question.
Yes. I was calling, um, and I realized that the pandemic has interfered probably with the timeline, but my question was regarding the status and timeline of relocating the Richland County core operations to the Columbia Place Mall. Because I know they spent millions of dollars on this, and so I was just wondering, what's the status?
Um, thank you so much for your question, uh, Jackie. And currently, um, what we're working towards, prior to us taking office, the Renaissance Program was undergoing a, somewhat of a makeover, if you'll allow me to say, and, and just somewhat, the council had, the, the sitting council at the time had made the decision that, um, there were some things in that Renaissance Plan that perhaps we should take a second look at. Now that council, um, now that we have a new council that's being seated, we will, in the, in the next few weeks, we'll start to have conversation to move forward with the Renaissance Plan. It's not forgotten about. It is one of those things that, um, myself and my colleagues that are here on the phone with you tonight feel very passionate about. And we want to see it being, we want to see this being moved forward to the point that we not only just procure buildings, we don't just buy buildings, but, and, and put plans in place to say we're going to do something. But we do exactly what we said that we were going to do. It goes back to what Councilman Pugh said, and that is that we've got to rebuild trust and transparency here in the county. And that project is one of those areas that we need to rebuild trust. And so I would say, um, in the next months to come, you're going to hear more conversation about this program and about the things that we are looking to do, uh, specifically in the Columbia Place Mall area. There's lots, there is conversation, some of which we just can't talk about at this time just because they're, they're still developing. But, but stay tuned. We, we, we've got some exciting things that are looking to, um, come that, that way.
Thank you, Councilman Barron. Can you tell us a little, if someone wants to get in touch with you, how can they connect with you directly?
Sure. Uh, to correct, to connect with me directly, it is my name, and that's Barron, B-A-R-R-O-N dot Gretchen, G-R-E-T-C-H-E-N, at richlandcountysc.gov. I'll give it to you one more time, and that's Barron, B-A-R-R-O-N dot Gretchen, at richlandcounty.gov. My telephone number is 803-977-4337. And for those of you who, uh, enjoy social media, please connect with me on all the social media platforms at TeamBarron7.
That's great. Thank you so much. And if, I, I'd like to bring in Councilman Walker, um, who just, who represents District 8. And he, that, that district runs from the northern portion of Forest Acres through Arcadia Lakes and northeast Richland, as far north as Lake Carolina and Long Creek, such a, a wide district. Uh, he has 15 years of experience as a legal professional, having served as municipal court judge, city prosecutor, and assistant city attorney for the City of Columbia, as well as an assistant public defender for Richland County. Mr. Walker now serves as a small business owner and founder of Stony &amp; Walker LLC, which has law offices in Columbia and Charleston. Councilman Walker, thank you for being at tonight's meeting.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having me this evening, Ms. King. I tell you, after, uh, Councilman Pugh and Councilwoman, um, Barron, I, I think they've covered just about all the issues of consequence, uh, in Richland County. And, and I think we all can go home.
I think there are more questions out there, so I disagree. I disagree.
No, but that's, but that's a testament, though, but that's certainly a testament to, uh, Councilman Pugh and, and Councilman, uh, you know, Barron. So, no, absolutely. But, yeah, glad to be here.
That is great. Thank you for being here and talking about a number of, of issues that are affecting people in the community. As you've heard all of this, where do you see your role in helping Richland County prepare for the next, this next, uh, next chapter for, for where we see ourselves?
Well, I, I, I'll say this. Uh, you know, certainly, I, I think that there is a lot of potential here in Richland County. I think, uh, you have some people in life who sort of view the glass as, uh, half-empty. I, I tend to be- I, I tend to be, uh, you know, an eternal optimist. I, I normally see the glass as half-full. And so there, uh, wherever there's a crisis, you know, I tend to see an opportunity. Uh, so, you know, I believe that Richland County is gonna come out of COVID, uh, this pandemic, uh, stronger. I think we're gonna come out more prosperous. Uh, certainly, I think it's probably, this pandemic has forced us to, uh, reevaluate in terms of how we govern, how we do business, how we live our lives. Uh, it's probably forced, uh, us to sort of reassess and in some ways maybe recalibrate the way we, we sort of think about things. Uh, so, again, while we may be, we're coming out of a crisis, but at the same time, I think that crisis has, uh, created or put, put Richland County in a position, um, for us to, you know, just really, uh, you know, just thrust, uh, forward. Uh, in terms of where I just see the county, um, two years from now or four years from now, you know, I'm hoping that we have a county that is, uh, more prosperous in terms of economic development and jobs that pay, uh, a livable wage. I'm hoping to see a county that is more navigable. What I mean by that is, uh, you know, uh, more roads, better roads rather, in addition to, uh, more roads, improved infrastructure, uh, more sidewalks, more bike lanes, uh, and, and a county where, uh, it's just, it's easy to navigate, uh, to get from one end of the county to, uh, the other, especially in northeast Columbia. Traffic congestion is probably the bane, uh, of the existence of most residents, or at least most of my constituents who that live, uh, deep, uh, in, in the northeast. And I often tell folk, you know, if you live, uh, in the Clemson Road area or Hardscrabble Road or going out toward Killian, uh, and it, it's almost like any time you leave your house, it's, you, you have to sort of approach it like a, an astronaut coming back into Earth's orbit. You kind of have to time it. You know, you time when you go to the grocery store, you time when you go to, you go to Walmart, when you go to Kroger, you time when you leave, go to work in the morning when you take your children to school or in many cases, when you decide to leave, uh, from work to come home. Uh, and so, and that's because we've just had, uh, we, we've seen, uh, growth at an exponential, you know, rate or pace in northeast Richland, but that growth has outpaced, uh, improvements, uh, and enhancements to infrastructure, uh, as well. And so certainly, uh, we want to do something about that. And, and also with respect to, you know, transportation, it's not, you, you don't just want, I don't want to see a county four years from now, uh, where your ability to access, to have access to, um, you know, to nutritious foods or have access to, uh, jobs that pay a living wage, uh, or deny simply because you don't have adequate transportation. So doing things that, um, to improve, um, public transportation here in Richland County, mass transit, perhaps more routes, uh, you know, making sure that we, uh, we have more bus shelters so that way people who travel the county can travel in dignity, uh, even, uh, exploring, uh, you know, alternative modes of transportation such as Lyft and with Uber. And I know that, uh, that the Comet has partnered with Uber and Lyft, uh, you know, to help, to help those families, uh, who qualify that it, you know, if you have to go to the grocery store, you don't find yourself leaving the Walmart or leaving the Bi-Lo, well, Bi-Lo's out of business now, but, uh, leaving the Kroger, what have you, uh, with, uh, you know, uh, two, you know, two arms of, uh, you know, handfuls of grocery and you're having to get bored of bus as opposed to being able to have say a car that picks you up. I know Comet has partnered with, uh, Lyft and, and Uber to provide, uh, to actually, uh, to freight the cost of, of fare, uh, for those individuals who qualify. So, you know, but it, but it, but the, again, the main point is, we want a county that's more prosperous, but also a county that's more navigable, uh, from, uh, for people, uh, no matter what your socioeconomic status, uh, may be.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. We have so many people on the phone lines and I'd like to get to as many as I can. So if someone would like to contact you directly, how can they do that? Let's give them that information.
Absolutely. If someone wants to contact me directly, you can, uh, reach me on my, uh, mobile phone. That number is eight oh three nine seven seven four three four zero. And my email is walker dot overture. That's O-V-E-R-T-U-R-E at richlandcountysc, as in South Carolina, dot gov.
Thank you. Uh, and please, everyone that's on the line, please be patient. We're gonna get to you. I just want to make sure that we hear from all of the council members tonight. Again, for those of you just joining us, my name is Tamara King. I'm Richland Library's Community Relations Director. And you're listening to our Community Teletown Hall where we are having an important discussion with the five newly-elected Richland County council members about their visions for the community amid the COVID-19 pandemic. If you would like to ask a question, uh, please press zero on your telephone keypad now and you will be connected. Um, and also to connect directly with the county, please call the Embusman's Office, uh, Richland County Embusman's Office at eight oh three nine two nine six thousand. You can leave a detailed message with your name and contact information. I want to bring in Ms. Mackey, Councilwoman Mackey. She represents District Nine, which is located in northeast Richland and includes the Pontiac Community. She started her professional career in Columbia, working with Palmetto Parent Magazine and the South Carolina Governor's School of Science and Mathematics Foundation. She has also led, been the lead communications and economic development effort for the city of Goose Creek. And she now serves as a senior project advisor with NP Strategy. Good evening, Councilwoman Mackey. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Ms. King. Thank you for having me.
Wonderful. Um, you've heard your colleagues. Uh, I'd like to hear from you, what important issues do you think the county is facing right now? What are the top three issues that you think are really important for the council to address?
Yeah, you're right. My colleagues who have gone before have really hit on the, um, important issues. And I, I wanna start out by highlighting the fact that, you know, there are five new folks that came on to council this year. And in the time period that we've been working together, it, it has been great. We've all been able to talk and, and hear each other's point of view and, and work together on issues. And when you hear us, you know, we're representing different districts, but we agree on many of the, the issues, important issues that are facing the county. And I, I'll start with that because that is important. The fact that we are five new council members coming on and they were able to talk and agree upon issues helps as we work to identify solutions for those issues in our communities. And so when we look at, um, you know, one of the very most important issues everyone's mentioned is COVID. You know, we, we're getting vaccines for COVID right now. But it, it is and will continue to be the important issue for Richland County as well as our state. Even once everyone that wants to get vaccinated gets the vaccine, we still have those impacts of COVID that we heard earlier on the call about folks that are, you know, need assistance with their rent or mortgage and getting them back up to date on that. Looking at folks that lost their jobs and, and where those jobs may have left our communities, how the council is gonna work to bring new jobs here. And so COVID itself, the, the, the disease is an issue and the safety of our residents are issues, but also making sure that, um, economic development and, and the jobs and the good-paying jobs for our residents too are just as much an important issue.
And, you know, the information about the COVID-19 pandemic is changing every day, it seems like, right? There's some new information out there, new ways, new people that are now qualified to get vaccinated, all of those things. So how's the county making sure that they're communicating with local residents, uh, this information so they have the most up-to-date?
Yes. Um, and I think Ms. Barron mentioned this earlier, you know, different members of council, but as well as our, our staff continuously have conversations with PRISM. We have conversations with SC, um, DHEC. And they're sharing the information. We make sure the information is available on the county's website. But also, all of us have social media pages and we, we talk to our citizens and making sure that the information is getting out. And it does change and as soon as the county gets it, they're right, they're making sure that they are sharing it as well with the public. And, you know, I, I encourage citizens that always want to know the most current information, please always visit, you know, DHEC's website and take a look. And if you have questions, um, Ms. King, I believe you gave Embusman's phone number. But you can always shout to Embusman's if you need, uh, questions answered related to, is the county offering any additional services related to COVID? They'll, they'll be sure to give you that correct information and respond to you in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mackey. If someone would like to contact you directly, how can they do that?
Yeah, my email is mackey, M-A-C-K-E-Y, dot Jessica. And it's Jessica with one S, so J-E-S-I-C-A at richlandcountysc.gov. The mackey dot Jessica at richlandcountysc.gov. My cell phone number is eight oh three nine seven seven four three three eight. I'm also on Facebook and Twitter, Jessica Mackey. You can find me on both. And then I have, uh, my website, which is jessicamackey.com, where residents in District Nine can visit my website and sign up for my monthly newsletter or sign up and have me come speak with your HOA group. So that's J-E-S-I-C-A-M-A-C-K-E-Y dot com.
And I just know you're gonna be busy. I think all of, all the five new council members, you guys are gonna be busy because people want to talk to you. They want to meet you. They want to know who represents their community. Um, and before I open up those phone lines, uh, thank you, Ms. Mackey, very much for, for joining us. Um, but I want to bring in Councilwoman English. She represents District Ten, because I, I feel like once I open up the phone lines, it's gonna take us right to seven thirty. I want to make sure that all of the council people get their time on, uh, the line. So, uh, District Ten includes parts of lower Richland and northeast Richland. It's a very broad district. Uh, Councilwoman English has served the state for more than 30 years in various positions, working with the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control and the South Carolina Department of Mental Health. She currently serves on the South Carolina Developmental Disabilities Council and is a licensed ordained minister and has dedicated her time on the lower Richland, uh, for the Lower Richland Sweet Potato Festival Committee and is a former Richland Library Board of Trustees. Thank you so much, Councilwoman English, for being on the call today.
Thank you, Ms. King. It's always a pleasure being here. Thank you again for having me.
And I've had a lot of questions for you that have come through. Uh, so I'm gonna just go ahead and give you that question. People want to know how they can, uh, meet you and if you're having any plans for any meetings in District Ten coming up pretty soon.
We, we are. We are trying to be careful because of COVID. I've, I've been vaccinated, so, um, I'm like people who say it loud and proud. Um, I've had my vac, my vaccine and just, um, really excited about that. So we're gonna start doing, um, kind of town hall meetings first. And then as the numbers go down, we'll increase it to more public events. Um, but just keeping those small events in different areas. So that's coming up, so we want everyone to just kind of stay tuned. We just want to look at the numbers. Um, I'm a little older than the, the other council members, so, um, I'm very cautious, so.
Not older, I say seasoned.
Oh, bless your heart.
You know, um, there are a lot of concerns, like we talked about with the pandemic and high-speed internet, right? People are all online, we're zooming, we're zooming church, uh, we're zooming, uh, our, our schools. You know, this is how people connect. So broadband access is a huge, real huge concern right now, I think for many in underserved areas, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. How are you thinking about addressing this issue in District Ten and moving forward?
One of the things I like that, um, it's already in place is Tri-County. And Tri-County is one of those reputable, um, um, companies. It's our, our, um, um, what do you call, our electric, their co-op. And they've been around for years. When, when this area and many others didn't have electricity, Tri-County came in and it's by the members. And so Tri-County is doing broadband. They're bringing 250 miles of services out. Um, and one of the things, just going forward, that I'd like to continue to see is when we have, um, things that come up or when we're planning, when we're collecting those informations, when we're processing what to do, um, when we're putting those strategic plans in place, is to include all of that as a part of the infrastructure moving forward. So that way we don't have to go back and say, oh, what about this? But have that solid infrastructure in place from the beginning as a part of that. But, um, Tri-County is already in place and I think it's the beginning of, or mid-April, that they will have more services out there. And they're coming. It's, um, as I said, it's a huge area. It's slow, but it's sure. And they are a solid reputable, um, company that we can depend on. And so that's what we're excited about.
Thank you so much for that. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the phone lines, if that's okay. We have someone, an Arthur Town resident, who has some concerns. Uh, Josephine Green. Uh, Josephine, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Josephine Green, are, oh, great. Please ask your question of, of Councilwoman English.
Yes, what I was concerned about is we hear of all the grocery store closings and I'm concerned because, um, off the town area, we live right below the, the stadium, the Gamecock Stadium. And I've lived in this community for over 20 years and there has not been a grocery store in that area. Are they going to consider revitalizing the Bluff Road area and perhaps add grocery stores in that area?
Um, currently, they're, um, looking at some things, kind of like Ms. Barron said. There are some things that are coming down in the Renaissance that we are discussing and looking at that, but unable to just, um, give any type of solid answers on right now. But we are definitely reviewing that. That's one of the areas that we're considering and reviewing. And we just have to see how all of this kind of comes together right now because that, that is an area of concern, along with having the infrastructure in place to support all of that, you know, along with the sewer system and everything that comes along with that. And thank you, Ms. Green, it's, um, for being on our call with us today.
Thank you to all of our callers. And we're gonna try to get to as many as possible. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman English of District Ten. If, if someone would like to get in touch with you directly, how can they do that?
English Cheryl at richlandcountysc.gov. And that's E-N-G-L-I-S-H dot Cheryl, C-H-E-R-Y-L, at richlandcountysc.gov. And my number is area code eight oh three seven six seven two three two two. And that's area code eight oh three seven six seven two three two two.
Thank you for that. Uh, again, for those of you just joining us, my name is Tamara King. I'm Richland Library's Community Relations Director. And you're listening to our Community Teletown Hall. We're having an important discussion with the five newly-elected Richland County council members. If you would like to ask a question, press zero on your telephone keypad now and you will be connected. We're gonna go to the phone lines and try to see how we can get through as many questions as possible. I have a question directly for Councilman Pugh, um, from Karen Archer. Karen, are you there?
This is Sandra.
Oh, Sandra, nice to meet you. Uh, do you have a question for Councilman Pugh?
I just wonder what are the long-term plans or hopefully short-term plans for Broad River Road to get it back to where it used to be without the, the, um, strip clubs, without the adult shops, without the title loan businesses?
Ms. Sandra, that's a great question. Uh, you know, Broad River Road is near and dear to my heart. I lived over there for some time while I was finishing, finishing up college. I actually just moved from Broad River in 2007. So I'm definitely aware of the nostalgia of how Broad River used to thrive and the things that were going on over there. So we're actually in the process of making an assessment of how we should move and operate over there. Um, one of the most important things for me is to figure out which direction and how to go about getting, um, some, um, grocery stores back in that area. And it's gonna take us, take it many steps because, you know, it's hard to get people to want to invest in that area. As you see, the Walmart left and which the Walmart in turn drove the other, uh, grocery stores out of business. So just revitalizing the area, making it more conducive to want, for businesses to want to come in. Um, I, 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 I don't want to speak to it, but I'm in the process of working with some folks that's gonna come and help us get a temporary fix over there until we can, until we can get someone to come and invest back into that community. But, um, we're definitely working hard, Ms. Sandra, to figure out what the next steps are to, uh, bring Broad River back to, um, where it was.
Thank you for that, Councilman Pugh. Um, I- Thank you for that, Councilman Pugh. Um, I would go to my next caller, Elaine Wadden. She has some thoughts about or questions about helping the elderly. Elaine, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. My, um, question is for, uh, Councilman, uh, Baron. Uh, since your, uh, jurisdiction is the, uh, Blackwood area, uh, my question is, uh, you have elderly people who, uh, say maybe that, that their homes are like back off of the, uh, the main highway. Uh, does Richland County have any type of programs in place that would, uh, help elderly people, um, you know, keeping their, their driveways in repair? And the reason why I ask is because, uh, my mother is, is a Blackwood resident. Uh, she lives on Sandfield Road, which is right off of Langford Road, and, and her house is back off of the, uh, the highway. And her road, her driveway is in serious need of, uh, repair. And my mother's ninety-nine years old. Um, and, and does, uh, Richland County have, you know, program i- in place, you know, for, for helping elderly residents, uh, you know, keeping up their, keeping their driveways, uh, you know, in repair?
That's, so thank you for your question. And, and I think that, before I could answer your question, um, I would need to ask you a question is, and that is, is this road a private road or is it a county maintained road?
Um, well, I guess you could, you could say it's, uh, it's private, but I said, but her, her driveway is like right off of the road, but it's kind of long.
And, and, and so I, and I would, and, and I think that this would be something that you and I can explore offline because there, there's lots of options perhaps that we could look at. First and foremost is to take a, a fair assessment to see if it's the driveway, um, portion, because there is a portion of the easements that are coming off of a county maintained road that, um, can be repaired. Now, to repair the entire driveway, that would be where we would need to look to some of our community partners to help us, uh, address that issue, um, for your mother. Um, so there are a couple of ways that we can, that we can definitely look at it. But before, we could give a, a fair assessment to say, yes, we can, what we can do, we really need to look at the, what we're, the project in which we're have, that we're talking about. So I, I would, I would encourage you to please give me a call, um, or, or send me an email unless, you know, I can meet out at the property and we can look to see, um, uh, what can be done. Take some pictures, send it off to our Public Works Department and then have them to assess that, you know, to see what, what we can as a county do.
Okay. Uh, what's your number again?
It's eight oh three nine seven seven four three three seven.
Four three three seven.
Correct.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, uh, for your call. And I, I want to get one more person in. Um, they've had this question for a while. Um, and I want to go to Khalil Brooks. He has a question. It's for any of the council members who would like to respond. Khalil, are you there?
Yes, my name's Latasha.
I've been, I've been batting thousands tonight with names. Ms. Brooks, thank you for being on the call. Please ask your question.
Okay. My question is, what are your plans for, um, oversight regarding procurements and government spending and purchasing cards? Richland County has been in the news a lot with, um, the penny tax, um, recently with the council member and her purchase card. So what oversights are in place or going to be in place and maybe possibly having some sort of third party come in and do an audit of your procurement?
Well, this is, um, Councilwoman English, and I'm, I really want to allow, um, Councilman Walker to speak to this. One of the things that I shared with him coming in, I've been with the state for thirty years, and our procurement measures are solid. They're in place, um, with the Developmental Disabilities Council. I have had a credit card in my possession, um, ever since I've been there. And it is without a doubt, you do not use it unless you have a state car, unless you're handling state business. And then, um, you have those, your, the information that you enter in in order to use that card is directly, um, locked into your name. But I would love for Councilman Walker, if he will, to just kind of share his thoughts because we all thought it was a great idea, so.
You would put me on the spot, Councilwoman English.
I would.
And, and ma'am, uh, as far as the caller, uh, what is your name again?
I think we've, we've lost her.
Okay.
It was, uh, Ms. Brooks, I believe. It's not Ms. Brooks.
Ms. Brooks, well, Ms. Brooks, thank you for, uh, uh, the question. It's actually a very, uh, good question. And what that tells me is that you are very informed, uh, and, uh, and a voter who's attuned to what's happening in the county. Uh, recently, uh, we as a council voted, uh, to, uh, remove the P-cards or the purchase cards from, uh, the possession of individual council members. In fact, Richland County was the only county, and I call it a dubious distinction, but the only county, uh, wherein council members actually had, uh, possession, uh, of, of credit cards. Now, Councilwoman, uh, English and I, you know, had agreed to disagree in terms of whether or not, uh, council members, uh, should or should not have the card. But that's just based on her experience in working in state government, uh, for so long and coming from an agency where you actually had, uh, you know, some pretty tight oversight, um, you know, tight controls in terms of oversight, whereas the county really didn't have that. Uh, I came to the conclusion that in light of some of the things that you just highlighted, uh, regarding, you know, controversy as pertaining to the penny, uh, there were some other controversies as well that had dawned Richland County in recent years. And then you, you put the P-card or the purchase card rather on top of that, I came to the conclusion that we needed to make a statement, something that just was not symbolic, but something that was substantive, where we can send a message to voters that, uh, there was a new day in Richland County. And what better way to do that, uh, than by, uh, refusing to accept, uh, the purchase card, uh, until there were some tighter controls, uh, or oversight put in place. And then ultimately we all ended up, the council ended up voting, uh, to just take the cards away from council members, uh, completely, not because we didn't trust ourselves or what have you, but this was about, uh, doing something that, uh, the voters could say that clearly there's a new, there's a, it's a new day in Richland County. And it's also, it's about renewing people's trust and confidence in their county government. Uh, so, uh, we voted on that, I believe, perhaps two meetings ago. And so now there are, uh, new, uh, restrictions and new, um, this, this new, uh, oversight in place as pertains to the purchase card. I believe that, uh, as for council members, uh, we have a, there's going to be a, a purchase card coordinator or a P-card coordinator, uh, assigned. And so in the event the card has to be used or what have you, then pretty much it's like checking the card out from that person or someone who would authorize those expenditures, uh, for us. And it's not just for council members, but for, uh, the entire county. Uh, so you won't have any, you know, single member or any, anybody who works for the, for county government, you know, walking around with, uh, the credit card, uh, but instead they would have to go through their department's, uh, purchase card coordinator. So steps have been taken. Unfortunately, that just hasn't made the news. Uh, but we certainly made a strong statement, uh, as a council, you know, a, a couple of meetings ago, uh, with respect to the purchase card. Uh, so I hope that answers the question.
Thank you so much, Mr. Walker, for that great overview. And I think that's a good place for us to start. Can you believe the hour has gone by so quickly? We've covered a lot of ground, and there's still about seven questions still on the line I wasn't able to get to. So, uh, please continue to hold and we'll have some more information at the end on how you can still leave a message. Um, we want to take a moment to thank all of our five newly elected Richland County council members for providing vital information and answering questions. And we want to thank all of you for joining us tonight. If your question was not addressed during the community Teletown Hall, please stay on the line to leave a message, and we will return your call in the coming days. Also, we wanted to let you know that a recording of this community Teletown Hall will be posted on richlandlibrary.com later this week. Please consider sharing it with others. Thank you again. We hope you found this hour helpful, and this concludes our call. Stay healthy and safe. Thank you.